All right, good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of Somersville City Council on this 27th day of June 2022. I'd like to welcome all of our guests this evening and get started right into tonight's agenda. The first item on the agenda is consideration of the council minutes of the meeting held on June 13th of 2022.
Move to approve. Play the reading.
Second?
We have a first and a second. Counsel, the motion was to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to those minutes as they were presented in your packet? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Public comment?
No.
No public comment tonight. Okay, counsel, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the utility budget. This would be the water and sewer 2022-2023 budget. What I'd like to do, counsel, is go down this budget item by item, answer questions, and explain. Starting first with operating revenue, you'll see that the sewer operating revenue is 1.4 million 25,000. Counsel, I will tell you that these numbers are estimated numbers, but they do take into consideration the rate increases that will take effect in August, although this budget goes into effect July 1st of 2022. The water anticipated revenue for this fiscal year is 1,962,100 dollars. Brings us to a combined operating revenue of 3,387,100 dollars. Counsel, if you have any questions about the revenue? Okay, moving right along. Personal services, you can see the breakdown with the sewer, 449,300 dollars. With the water, 673,700 dollars, bringing us to a combined personal services to operate our utilities of 1,123,000 dollars a fiscal year. The next item on the agenda is contractual, 7,000 for sewer, 9,000 for water, with a combined of 16,000 dollars. Quite frankly, counsel, that's for legal and audit and software. General and administrative, you can see that for the sewer, it's 70,500, and for the water, it's 141,400, bringing us to a combined of 211,900 dollars. And of course, that's for general and regular admin expenses. The general liability insurance, and we also do factor in an anticipated rate increase that we don't know about that would come in the future. So you can see that for the sewer, it's a 22,300 annually. For the water, it's 23,000, bringing us to a combined insurance annually of 45,300 dollars for the utilities. Supplies on the sewer, 126,500, 138,000 on the water, bringing it to a combined of 264,500. Does anybody have any questions on anything so far?
What do you have in general administration, please?
In general?
You have a lot of, you have your personal services there, so what's encompassed in general administration?
That would be anything that we do from a standpoint, let me just give it to you Okay, one thing in general is bank fees. Bank fees are 55,000 dollars.
So a bank charges us 55,000 just to pump that money through their bank?
In general, we have transportation expense, 21,000. Source and supply miscellaneous expense, 7,000. Water treatment miscellaneous, 22,000. Transportation and distribution miscellaneous expense of 17,000.
Would transportation be like the men's trucks and things that are filled with their contract?
It would be probably where we're paying, probably where we're paying for them to travel for training and, uh, I can get you an itemized breakdown if you'd like.
It sounds like there might be some duplication in there that would need to go in other, like you've got supplies in general administration. I don't know what your supplies would be there that wouldn't fall into supplies.
Yeah, so I can get you a breakdown, Mike?
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, we can get you a breakdown. We can get you an itemized breakdown.
Especially that bank, that sounds a lot.
Well, let me, let me, let me tell you, that's miscellaneous general expense, including bank fees, is what this says here. I don't have an itemized of what all those expenses are, but rest assured, through auditing, they're coded the way they're to be coded. There's not any duplications or miscoding of expenditures. I can just get you an itemized breakdown of what those expenditures are.
Okay.
But I want to, I want to set the record clear. Looking back down here, it says miscellaneous general expense, including bank fees. Transportation expense is an item. I can get you that itemized breakdown of exactly what that is.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Are there any pay raises anticipated in the personal services?
Yes, same ones that you, same ones that you approved for the city side. And then also, the personal services also takes into consideration our health insurance goes from December to December, and, and so we, we factor in the potential of a increase on, on the, on the health insurance.
And the liability insurance, just for discussion, I guess that's not a lot of money, but that seems pretty high. What, what are they, what are the concerns of liability insurance selling water? Somebody getting sick or...
Well, that, Mike, that includes not just the liability, but the property. Includes all the property of the utilities. So that would be ensuring the plants.
Your, your fiscal plant.
Yeah, yeah, that include, that's, it's, it's, um...
So that would be...
General liability insurance is inclusive of every, all the property, the, the business personal property and the liability.
Okay. So that's basically all insurance, not just liability?
Yeah, it's, it's general liability insurance is the way, yeah. So it includes, yeah, and our general liability insurance policy is inclusive of the property, business personal property and the liability. Okay, supplies. Sewer is 126,500. Water is 138,000, bringing the combined supplies to 264,500 dollars. Utilities, sewer, 21,700 dollars. Water plant, 166,000. Now that's just not the water plant, that would be all the lift stations and everything that's included in, in the water. And then the total combined utilities is 187,700. Depreciation, on the sewer, it's 332. On the water, it's 542. The difference there is the water plant is probably about close to 10 years older than the sewer plant, therefore the depreciation factor has kicked in more on the sewer than it has to water. Comes to a combined depreciation of 874,000. Maintenance, 97,700 on the sewer and 226,000 on the water, bringing it to a total of 323,700 for the maintenance of the water and sewer. Total operating expense, including depreciation for the sewer, is 1.1 million 27,000, and on the water, it's 1,919,100 dollars, bringing it to a combined of 3 million 48,000 dollars. Any questions about any of that? Okay, moving right along. So your net operating income for the sewer is 298,000. For the water is 43,000, bringing it to a combined of 341,000. So, moving on down the line, interest, interest income, you can see a 600 bucks total, 100 for the sewer, 100, or 500 for the water. Obviously, we get no money on interest anymore. Interest expense for the sewer is 31,298 dollars. For the water is 102,029 dollars, coming to a combined 133,327 dollars. You add that 600 back in that we received from interest income, it brings us to a loss of, in this category, of 132,727 dollars. That income comes to 208,273 dollars. Available for debt service, you take your total income, operating income, you add back in your depreciation, it'll bring you to 1,215,000 dollars. And the breakdown there for each individual utility, the sewer is 630,000 available for debt, the water is 585,000 available for debt. You take out your total principal and interest, which is 899,950 combined, that gives us a debt service coverage of 135.1 percent. Net available for utilities is 315,905 dollars. That would be after we subtract our, our bond debt and interest. That breakdown being 177,413 for sewer and 138,492 for water. Brings the revenue and maintenance reserve required that we fund per our bonds at 2.5 percent, combined 84,678 dollars, breaking it down, the sewer, 35,625, and the water, And then when we go to meeting the new Senate Bill 234 with the 12% O and M requirement, you can see that makes you put 271,513 combined, which would be a 172,138 from, uh, from water and 99,375 for sewer. So technically, you can see if we meet that new standard, we don't put enough money in the bank for those reserves. You gotta look, Jim.
Okay.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, Mike, good. How about down on this end? Everybody good? Okay. With that said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the water sewer income statement budget for '22, '23.
Move to approve.
We have a first?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Counsel, I will forward to you via email a detailed general expense so that you can see that, and I do apologize for not having that with me this evening. A better breakdown. Okay, the next item on the agenda is reappointment of Mike Hughes to the Brown Oaks Board of Directors for a three-year term expiring June 30th of 2025.
Move to approve.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Next item on the agenda is to reappoint Meg Ashby to the Brown Oaks Board of Directors for three years, her term expiring June 30th of 2025.
Move to approve.
Have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Reappoint Adam Thomas to the Somersville Board of Zoning Appeals for three years, term expiring June 30th of 2025.
Move to approve.
We have a first?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. What I would like to do is, I would like to say that, and I don't remember if I did it last time, but we certainly appreciate our citizens that are willing to step up and serve on these boards, so we thank Mike, Meg, and Adam for their past service and being willing to continue to serve the city of Somersville. Okay, counsel, the next item on the agenda is the review of the Home Rule application. So counsel, as you know, this, this will be, this went available to the citizens, not will be, but went available to our citizens last Friday, the 24th. Let me make sure I'm giving that right date. Yeah, went for public review starting last Friday, the 24th. This application will be delivered to the Home Rule Board no later than September 9th. In most cases, my estimation is it'll be there a lot earlier. If you turn to the first page, order of contents, there's a listing of contents. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this page because I'm going to walk you through the application, so we'll walk through the, the table of contents here. The first thing you'll find, counsel, is a letter that will be signed by me to Mr. Dave Hardy, the Secretary and Chairman of Department of Revenue, Home Rule Board. And basically, this is just a letter that goes out to him that will be sent whenever it is we send the application before September 9th, that lets him know that we are officially requesting to be on the agenda for the October presentation, is where I will, on behalf of the city, give a presentation to the Home Rule Board. Going through the application, the next page, the Home Rule Plan and Amendment Template, the most important part in that application right there is the first part, because I'm going to walk you through Sections 2 and 3 as we go through them, which is the narrative and attachments. The next page, the Home Rule Application Plan and Amendment Checklist, we'll go through that when we get ready to send it off, but you'll see that this package includes all those items that'll actually be checked off when the application goes into the Home Rule Board. Section number two is the narrative, the introduction. The city of Somersville was founded in 1824. The city was named after Lewis Summers, a local judge who introduced a bill to create Nicholas County. The city of Somersville is the county seat, was home to both, both to Union and Confederate incumbent encampments during the Civil War. The city was, was mostly burned down by Confederate spy Nancy Hart during the war and was not rebuilt until 1884. In 1940, Nicholas County High School was established in the downtown area known as Old Main. The year 1960 was a big turn for the city of Somersville with the construction beginning on the dam, which would later dedicate, was, which was later dedicated by President Lyndon B. Johnson in 1966. They ask for a quick narrative introduction of your city. Moving forward many years, Somersville has developed itself in serving as a multi-county hub. The upgrade of Route 19 from a two-lane road to a four-lane highway has proven to be essential to the city's economy. Our population can be misleading, misleading by the number itself as to what the city of Somersville has to offer. 2020 census, we're 3,121 in population. The city of Somersville is just south of 500 hotel beds, food service industry mixing locally owned cuisine with national chains, retail, including old-fashioned hardware, boutiques, quilt shop, and a variety of national box stores. The city's own hospital is operated by WVU Medicine, currently under construction, a new state-of-the-art 90-bed nursing home. This is a private, a public-private partnership, as 50 of the beds are owned by the city of Somersville. Somersville is the owner-operator of a regional, of our regional water and sewer utilities, as well as a hydro plant located at the Somersville Dam. As a small, class-three city, one could easily surmise that the city of Somersville is a small city with big-city opportunity. Nestled in the majestic mountains of West Virginia, being the new gateway to the New River Gorge National Park, we highlight our outdoor adventure capitalizing on tourism. Somersville Lake is the biggest body of water in the state of West Virginia. The lake and its landscape provides for world-class boating, kayaking, rock climbing, hiking, swimming, and fishing. The city of Somersville currently has 30 full-time employees, 17 full-time police officers, and a volunteer fire department that averages 500 calls a year. We, as a city, anticipate 20 to 25 percent increase in visitation throughout the area, putting a higher demand on our current workforce and emergency services. So then we move into narrative one. Narrative one, we're actually going for two narratives on the entrance of, or actually, I should say, let me back that up, we're actually going on two issues, two categories on entrance into the Home Rule. You establish yourself by a few, and then as you get in, you go back to the Home Rule Board and can add as many as you want. So our entry is going to be based on municipal sales and use tax category tax. Specific barrier is the West Virginia State Code, as it's presented there, I won't read through that, the code, the code number. If anybody cares to know it, it's available on public display here at the city of Somersville and also on our website. Specific problems created by the law, the West Virginia Code 8-13-5 sets forth standards by which municipalities can apply a business and occupation tax, BNO, on all businesses operating within the corporate limits of the municipality, but prohibits municipalities from charging a tax rate higher than the maximum rate imposed by the state. The state legislature adopts the rates, classifications, and exemptions governing the application and collection of BNO tax decades ago. The rates, tax, classification, rules governing the administration of the municipality business and occupation tax have not been updated to reflect the modern-day economy. Further, recent legislation amendments to the BNO tax through the adoption of House Bill 4567, Regular Session 2022, has decreased the city's tax base, making it more challenging to support essential municipal operations along with our vision for growth. West Virginia Code 8-13-C-4 permits municipalities to charge a 1 percent sales and use tax only if the municipality's pension fund is underfunded. The city of Somersville does not have a pension plan outside the state's retirement plan for public employees. West Virginia Code 8-13-C-4 permits municipalities to charge a 1 percent tax and use the tax if they repeal their BNO tax. The revenue generated by a 1 percent sales tax would recover the lost revenue created by House Bill 4567 and create the additional revenue needed for our city's future comprehensive planning, allowing us to compete in the current economic environment. Proposed solutions, with the authority pursuant to the West Virginia Code 8-1-5, the city of Somersville seeks to enact an ordinance that imposes a 1 percent municipal sales and use tax that would be administered, collected, and enforced by the state tax commissioner and conform with the requirements of West Virginia Code 10-11-10-11C and the requirements of the Streamlined Sales and Use Tax Administration Act as codified in the West Virginia Code 11-15B. As allowed by the West Virginia Code, the city of Somersville seeks to enact a municipal sales and use tax while reducing its BNO tax to benefit retail business owners. It is important to know that the city of Somersville for decades has been very pro-business by charging approximately 50 percent of the allowable rate in BNO tax categories, see chart that's in our packet. The highlights of our, this highlights our competitiveness in the region, along with proof to business owners that the city will only tax where it's needed to sustain the level of expected services. So you can see in there that the selling tangible property retailer rate is a quarter of a percent, we charged a half a percent. The contracting rate for contractors, we charge 1 percent, it's actually 2 percent. Businesses, we charge just a little over a half a percent, and we could have charged 1 percent. Rents, royalties, fees, and otherwise, same deal, we charge just a little over a half a percent. 1 percent was our, our max. And then banking, the same thing, a little over a half a percent, we could have gone to 1 percent. This is just to showcase a few examples, and these do show the bulk of the examples in which our revenue is driven. The city specifically proposes to reduce the BNO tax rate in the retail classification. The current rate for the retail classification is .25. Point 25, the city plans to reduce it by half, and the new, the new rate of the tax will be .125. Under this plan, the city proposes to reduce BNO tax rates for the approximation reduction to our businesses in the city of Somersville of 447,000 annually. In today's current economic environment, it is increasingly difficult to recruit business owners and developers to municipality under a traditional BNO tax structure. Moving to a consumer sales and use tax while lowering the BNO tax within various strategic business classifications, like the, the retail classification, will encourage more developers and businesses to be a part of the city so that they can receive the advantage of the municipal services. The city of Somersville provides essential police protection and corporate boundaries and fire protection, has a call area extending beyond city limits, along with regular mutual aid to the entire county. As a small city with medium-sized budget and economics, we maintain all the standard administrative services expected of modern-day government. With aging infrastructure, we strive to prepare for our future growth, along with increased demand on our city-provided services. Moreover, because of city's proximity to outdoor recreation, including camping, hiking, biking, rafting, boating, and fishing, among others, we have seen an increased interest in people and businesses wanting to reside and locate in Somersville. The city anticipates the need for additional infrastructure development and expanded recreational opportunities, and with increased tourism and business supporting that industry, there is a corresponding need for the improved emergency services and infrastructure. Along with maintaining our current portfolio, the city of Somersville has the current slate of projects that will be proposed by, which will be supported by the 1 percent additional tax, generating approximately 1.2 million dollars. Of course, our 125.5 acre recreational facility, this facility will include 20 miles of mountain biking, hiking, and walking trails, as well as soccer, softball, and baseball facility, and a playground for all children, including those with disabilities. The facility will appeal to the sports enthusiasts and those looking for outdoor adventure while visiting the New River... visiting the New River National Park region, not to mention the long-overdue, modern-day recreational facility for our locals. Not, not to mention the long overdue, sorry about that. The visitor's center capturing all the traffic entering and leaving the newly-designated national park, this visitor's center will not only highlight the New River Gorge National Park, but all the amenities offered by our county. Somersville Lake, fishing, boating, kayaking, rock climbing, biking, hiking, and the beautiful Cranberry Glades. Also sidewalks, gateways connecting our community, we have current sidewalk projects creating accessibility and mobility from our downtown to our commercial shopping district. The goal is to continue to build out the sidewalk systems, creating a gateways to our shopping district and new recreational facilities. The effort also highlights healthy lifestyles. Increased funding for emergency services. This effort will first focus on retention for both police and firefighters, the current environment with law enforcement finds more officers leaving the profession every day. We need not only to equip them with the best equipment and personal protection, but compensate them for the inherent risk of the job. The challenge with maintaining a volunteer fire department is the commitment of time and the out-of-pocket expenses to fulfill one's volunteer duty. The city of Somersville Volunteer Fire Department answers over five hundred annual calls, along with maintaining the best equipment, there is a strong consideration to add, at some point, a paid driver's system to our volunteer fire department. The city of Somersville's history of excellent fiscal management will utilize additional revenue to responsibly grow, maintain, and sustain our infrastructural and economic future. Anybody have any comments about any of that? Okay, so that is the first issue that we're going to address moving into Home Rule. The second issue is on-the-spot citations category administrative. The city of Somersville desires to clean up and have become, cleanup areas that have become unsightly, I don't know where my comments are. Due to owners, okay, let me start this over, sorry about that, counsel and those that are listening. The city of Somersville desires to clean up areas that have become unsightly due to owner's negligence in removing vegetation and other debris. Specifically, the city of Somersville seeks to the authority for its code enforcement officer, building officer, and/or city police department to cite property owners on the spot for violations of city ordinances concerning property maintenance, safety, and health hazard. Just for your understanding, counsel, that is not, we don't have that currently in our present ordinance. Presently, city code enforcement officials are unable to issue citations on the spot for internal sanitation violations and common nuisances, but rather are required to send preliminary notices and provide an opportunity to respond with automatically increasing cost to the city and delay to resolve an issue. This requires additional manpower, and a lot, and a lack of immediate citation power results in decreased compliance by property owners. Specific legal barrier, West Virginia Code eight dash twelve dash sixteen allows municipalities to adopt ordinances regulating repair, closing, demolition, et cetera, of dwellings or buildings unfit for human habitation. Additionally, municipalities may adopt ordinances requiring the owner of any such dwelling or building to pay for the cost of repair, alteration, improvements, demolition, et cetera. West Virginia Code eight twelve dash five further vests municipalities with the authority to, by ordinance or resolution, provide for the elimination of hazard to public health and safety, abate or cause to be abated anything which a majority of the governing body finds to be a public nuisance, but does not provide authority for granting citations for powers, citation powers to the code enforcement officials. In fact, West Virginia Code eight twelve sixteen, in pertinent parts, the language restricts enforcement agents to powers granted to civil process servers, such as all orders issued by enforcement agencies shall be served in accordance with the law of this state concerning the services of process and civil action, and be posted in conspicuous, conspicuous places, did I say that right? Conspicuous places, on the premises affected by the complaint or complaint or order, provided that no ordinance may be adopted without providing for the right to apply to the circuit court for a temporary injunction restraining the enforcement agency pending final disposition of the cause. Specific problem caused by the law, the results of the above code language is that, before citing property owners for property maintenance and related nuisance violations, sanitation, issue garbage buildup, graffiti, unmaintained laws, unsafe or broken sidewalks, building and zoning inspectors must follow an numerous, an onerous, jeez, process of first posting public notice ten days prior, warning, then applying for and receiving approval for city's municipal court before a citation is issued. This process is ineffective, costly, and leads to extended delay between the identification of public nuisance and the compliance from the property owner. In fact, because this process is so time-consuming and injurious to the apparent authority of the town's enforcement agents, non-compliance by the property owner is more likely the outcome. Somersville seeks authority to enact an ordinance providing its code enforcement officer the authority to issue on-the-spot citations for certain violations. The citation powers will extend to sanitation, drainage, sidewalks, in-dispair, high weeds, grass, or both graffiti, exterior garbage accumulation, and open storage in residential districts. These cited, these citations may be issued to owners, leasing, sublease, tenants, occupants, or agents or managers thereof presently having control over the property in question. An opportunity to respond will be afforded to the cited party by contesting the citation in municipal court. The citation will be administered substantially similar to how traffic citations are administered and are subject to appeal in the Circuit Court of Nicholas County. Other municipalities already accepted in the Home Rule programs have adopted ordinance authorizing on-the-spot citations and have reported the success of this enforcement tool. Somersville intends to follow the models implemented by other participating Home Rule municipalities. So basically, we're looking to streamline our property maintenance and issues we have in the city by on-the-spot citation issues. You can't do that now, right?
No, sir. It's a long, tedious process. That quite frankly has a lot to do outside the court and then in the court. This way, we issue a ticket and they come to court, just as if they would have, you know, I mean, doesn't mean that if we issue a ticket, they're, you know, they, you know, I mean, they still come to court, have the opportunity to come to court. Okay, so the next one is an affidavit that's signed by our city recorder that basically confirms that we held the public hearing thirty days prior to the public hearing. We did the Class Two Legal Ads, which is on the next page, and I can tell you that those ran in the Nicholas Chronicle, one last week and one this week. After the other one runs, that's when Gary will do the affidavit saying that we complied. Okay, then the next letter you can see in the packet is a letter that I sent out June twenty-third, which is the day before we did our public posting, went out to Mr. Dave Hardy, the secretary and chairman of the Home Rule Board, and every cabinet secretary of the state of West Virginia. So it was sent to him and copied to every single cabinet secretary in the state. Then the next is the Home Rule ordinance. Will be given a number after we have passed it, the first reading of this ordinance will be seven eleven, the second reading and adoption will be seven twenty-five, and then, of course, the public hearing will be that night before the second reading on seven twenty-five. Okay, then you have to have all the supporting exhibits with your copy of our minutes of all those meetings and the public hearing. Next thing is the fiscal, the fiscal impact worksheet that we included, not required, but we included. I would bring note to the, to the tax reduction based on twenty twenty, these are based on twenty twenty-one gross numbers, that is an estimate going forward, as well as the gross sales, the gross generated tax revenue is also an estimate, we have not had any confirmed numbers yet come back from the state tax department. Okay, the next thing is a affidavit that's signed by me, saying that I swear that the city of Somersville, that we have no outstanding state fees or tax obligation to the state of West Virginia. And if you look at the next page, we've already got a certificate which was issued on May twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-two, that the city of Somersville is in good standing with the West Virginia State Tax Department. The next is a letter that comes from our attorney, will be on his letterhead from White Law Head, from White Law Head, from White Law Firm, sorry about that.
Good name for attorney.
Anyway, that goes to the cabinet secretary of the Home Rule Board and the chairman, and it's a letter that he, he sends out. There's a copy of his letter, obviously, after we get all of our work done. Mark Matakovic will sign and date that letter, and we'll have a formal letter in there that goes with the packet. The next is a letter that's signed by me, it'll be dated and signed by me, that goes to the members of the Home Rule Board. Basically, be affirming to them that we have fully complied with the entire application and its process. Last but not least is the ordinance And then, of course, another certification, more or less an affidavit is required by Gary as the city recorder to adopt the municipal sales tax. Okay, counsel, this is a big one. Anybody have any questions, comments, anything they'd like to add? I'll do my best to answer it.
You've answered mine last week, or last, I mean, sorry.
Okay, counsel, this was just for review, I thought this was important that we review it. Also, you know, not everybody gets Chronicle, so it's important that we put it out on the TV. I want to stress that this is available here at City Hall, and it's also available on our website, so somersville.org if you want to review the entire application. And then, of course, I strongly encourage anybody that has questions to reach out and/or they can, they're more than welcome to come to the public hearing on July twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-two. Okay, the next item on the agenda would be the first reading of Article seventeen eleven, which is the West Virginia State Building Code adoption. I'll entertain a motion. Okay, we have a first and a second, counsel, basically what this is, is we already are in the, we already do have as part of our practice and operation here at the city of Somersville, we adopted the International Building Code. What this is, is this is a directive that basically came from the state fire marshal because of so that we need to adopt the updating of the International Building Code. So again, by detail, this gives all the changes and updates, additions, alterations, and insertions to the International Building Code as adopted by the city of Somersville. And of course, this is a code that our code official operates under. We have a first and a second, are there any discussions or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. Recorder's report.
Thank you, Mary, I just want to, just a short one here, just want to fill everybody in on, on planning and zoning and what we've been busy on. Again, tiny houses are still out there, but we have that sort of, not really on the back burner, but it is until we complete the Airbnb ordinances. Really, a good meeting, solid meeting, last meeting, it was a work session, went really well, thought everyone opened up real well, we did have some public comment in that for and against Airbnb, so that, that was very helpful, I appreciate all that. I do want to send a thank you to the Planning and Zoning Commission, those guys are now working overtime, we're trying to get this completed just as quickly as we can, we've got some folks really invested out there in our community, and we're, we're working diligently to work toward that. Typically, we meet once a month, we've already had two meetings in a month, and we have a third one on July seventh, I believe that's Thursday, July seventh at six o'clock. On that meeting, we're going to take what we've worked on in our work session, and I can go into more detail of that if anybody has any questions, all of that, but what we, the details we worked on in the work session, we are compiling an ordinance and application to move forward with that. So hopefully on Thursday, our, our commission will have that in front of them, I'm going to present that to them, and then we will work, work on that during that meeting. So lots, lots going on with Airbnb. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Okay, we're still, of course, so listening, any public input in this time. Anybody's got any comments or concerns or whatever, make sure they reach out to PMZ.
We spent a lot of time on that, and, and trying to find locations similar to ours, and, you know, not trying to recreate the wheel here, there's been folks out there making some mistakes, we don't want to make those same mistakes, so we're listening in to what they have to say. But it moved really well, last, what was that, last Monday night?
Yeah, there's been some good work done.
Yeah, good work.
I'm pleased with the support.
Mary, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Okay, counsel, I have a couple of things I'd like to run down with you real quick. First of all, I'd like to let you all know, and also, fine citizens of this city, that today I signed the agreement, the engineering agreement, that has basically, the projects previously have been approved by you all, but the engineering agreement was signed to start the engineering on Kentucky Road with the storm system there. So, you know, as, as, as it is, again, those are government grants, things are not moving very quick these days, but we finally got to where I did execute the agreement, so the engineering will get underway, and then hopefully not long after that, as that project is funded, we'll go from engineering to construction. But that was signed today. The other thing I want you to know, counsel, is that I was notified today, I have a copy of it, the letter here today, I will send it to you, it's confidential. I was notified today by Central Rivers Powers email, certified letters in the mail, that they are selling their interest in the hydro plant, and they have sent us a certified letter, confidential letter, because it sells, it's got the sales price in it, which they're still, so in other words, they have an offer, and they are giving us contractually, they're meeting the contractual obligations to give us a ROFO, and what that means is that's right at first offer. So immediately today, when I received that, I tried to reach out to our partner, I did not have success, tried them several times, which is odd, I could not get a hold of Jim today. But
today, but I am in receipt of an email copy of the letter. I will forward that letter to you all, but I want to stress that it is a confidential letter, and then, because it, it, it basically, somebody's offered them the price that now they have to turn an offer to us. So anyway, I will forward that letter to you all tomorrow, but I just want to highlight again the confidentiality of the nature of that letter, and of course, in the letter, it also spells it out as the last item in the letter. So, and then the next meeting, I would assume that we'll have an executive session, as we do have 60 days. I let Todd Nguyen, the CEO, know that they would hear in writing from us before the 60 days, or at the 60 days, whatever hit us first, but we'll have a discussion about it at the next council meeting and executive session after I wrangle the troops to see if there is anything we can do. Let's see, okay, the other thing I wanted to let you know, counsel, that I'm going to bring before you as a matter of discussion, and I mentioned it in the Home Rule application, it is a real discussion we need to have, and we need to start talking about, or having the discussion about detention of our police force. In the recent months, please don't ask me how many months, because I didn't bring that with me, but in the recent, let me say the recent year, we've had two police officers walk away from the job, because they no longer, you know, are interested in the nature of that type of work. And then, of course, attrition, and, you know, we, like everybody else, are going to have, beginning to battle, as we already are, the retention of a police force. And of course, as we know, there's nothing more important to us in this community, and as leaders of this community, as, you know, providing the protection and, and the security that not only do our citizens expect, but they deserve. So we are facing challenges from the standpoint of hiring and what other departments are doing in the state and in our region, and then, of course, most importantly, what we've got to be consumed about is, you know, making sure that we retain our police force. So I'll have that on the agenda for much more dialogue. If you have any questions or any ideas prior to the next council meeting, I would encourage you to reach out to me. In closing, what I would like to say is the city of Somersville Annual Fourth of July Fireworks Display will take place one day, or one week, one day, one week from today, on July 4th, Monday, July 4th, at dusk. This year's celebration will be handled like it always has in the past, with the nursing home not open yet, we're still going to use the field that we use over there beside the nursing home, so I would still encourage our community and extended community to come and take in the Fourth of July celebration in the Northside, Northside area of the city of Somersville, Merchant's Walk and Walmart, all that area will be a good viewing area like it always has been in the past, and then, of course, we'll work on a new location next year. With that said, encouraged on behalf of this body, all of our citizens and all those traveling to be safe, have a happy and joyous Fourth of July weekend, and I always remember everybody to think about what this weekend celebrates, you know, the signing of our independence and our freedoms, and it's just a very important weekend for us to celebrate and honor this great nation in which we live. So that concludes the marriage report, any council comments or reports?
Mayor, on the vendor checks here, we have a Field Turf USA, expanded turf, Field Turf, is that a turf for the high school?
Field Turf USA.
That's just a guess from where I said.
Yeah, no. Mike, I'm going to have to follow up with you on that, Field Turf USA, I'll have to, I'll have to get back with you on that one, I'll find you out. The other thing is, is it hit me as I, as I review all of this stuff, I know what those banking charges are now, the bulk of that is credit card charges, the fees we pay on credit cards for people who pay utilities with credit cards. We're charged, that's, that's where the, so, you know, that's part of the banking expense, that's why that number seems exorbitant, that's where we capitalize what we pay because we accept credit cards. That's a, but I'll get the detail with you on the rest of it, but I was trying to think, I knew it would come to me, but that's what that is, the bulk of that is.
Someone told me the turf was finished, I wasn't.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't do, that, that can't, no, we don't, yeah, yeah, what was, what was that specific account, Mike?
It's Field Turf, one word, Field Turf USA, 4181.
How much, what was the charge?
I just never saw that before, and it's like.
None? I don't, that's, that's, I don't know what that is, I'm going to find out. Yeah, I'll get you an answer. Okay, yes.
I've mentioned this before, I think, in past years, I got to do this one more time, I'd like to give a kind of a personal appreciation to the local Presbyterian Church, particularly Pastor John Stewart, or less than 10, and they coordinate work groups in this community. People come from out of state, almost every week during the summertime, and go out and not, not so much in the city of Somersville, but in the surrounding area, and work on people's homes and do things for people. And this year, there was, or a couple weeks ago, there was a group that came in, 18 people from the First Presbyterian Church of Bloomington, Indiana, they came here, it was about an equal number of adults and young people to work on people's places, and I happened to be at the church when they finished for a day, and I got in conversation with a husband and wife, they were part of that team, and they come to find out they are doctors, one's a family practice doctor and one, and the wife is a pediatrician, and they give up their time to come to this community. And I said, what did you do today, where were you? And the guy says, well, he said, well, I was under a trailer, and this is when it was hot, hot, I crawled under a trailer up in Craigsville, took out the insulation and replaced plumbing. So for people that don't have to do this, I mean, that was, that kind of inspired me, and that's, that's real servant's heart, and I just want to let you know, there's, there's people coming into our community on a steady basis all summer long, contributing their time and effort to help people in our area, and I'd like to give a shout out to that.
Absolutely.
First Presbyterian Church of Bloomington, Indiana. And the others that are doing that too, there's a small group down there this week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Outstanding, thanks, Jim. Okay, counsel, any other comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a first and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion so carries.